I had alerted the mayor and Captain McKenzie about the overtime and it was up further than, or more distant as far as like where you should be on the budget after three months in. Just to let him know that it was higher than normal and that they need to look at how it's been spent.
Good. How much did we have? We had a line item for overtime. How much would it be?
Sorry, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the year.
So they owe one hundred and thirty about that?
No, sir. The, they're almost, they're at forty-seven percent and they've spent about sixty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm. Could anyone give us a reason? What reason? Overtime? What reason?
Yes, sir. I'm prepared to do just that. Just bear with me because I got a lot of stuff here. We were budgeted for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in overtime for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth of 2016. And we actually spent over that, forty, almost forty-two percent over. We were fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. The budget for this fiscal year was only raised fifteen thousand for overtime, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So if we just did nothing but exactly what we did last year, we would probably still be over budget. We promoted six officers partly based upon their work ethic and those officers are Lieutenant Brad Gillick, Sergeant Tom Blair, Sergeant Kyler Wright, Sergeant Jeremy Colley, Sergeant Mike Medley, and myself. Part of that basis for that promotion was the fact that these officers come in and they work hard and they're active. We didn't promote them because they're sloths. This raises their hourly rate and it also raises subsequently their overtime rate and it's going to affect us in a lot of different areas. So if we did nothing but what we did last year and the promotions that we had this year with the increased overtime rate for six active officers, we're going to have increased overtime costs. The flex team, the flex team trains once a month. Kentucky League of Cities mandates that we train for sixteen hours per month. We train one day a month and we train on the days that the members are off and that allows us to have the whole team trained together. In the past, former Chief Rick McCubbin had a system for compensating the officers, the flex team members, when they trained. The system that he came up with, he gave flex team members on their training day eight hours of overtime and also gave them eight hours of comp time. I didn't ever really dig into that system because it didn't affect me at the time. I was a task force detective. I was in charge of the flex team and Lieutenant Gillick and I were on duty, so we would never receive overtime because we were on duty anyways. But since coming in this position, that has become under my responsibility, I have to put my name on the time sheets, I could not justify that, that system that Rick McCubbin had created for giving the officers overtime and comp time on, on a flex team training day. What we've done instead is we pay them overtime for the actual amount of hours that they work and so that has raised our overtime cost with training respective of the flex team. We have eight officers that come out for flex team training day and four of those officers are on duty, so they're not receiving overtime. That's Lieutenant Gillick, I, Eric Williamson, and Sergeant Wright. That leaves four more officers that we have to pay overtime to train. And two of those are sergeants. So that has, again, because they got raises commensurate with their new positions, that's increased the training cost for the flex team. Consequently, it's also increased the cost for the flex team when they are called out. Just two weeks ago, we had back-to-back operations. They had a high-risk narcotic search warrant that they served on a Monday, then the next day they had a high-risk warrant that they served on Tuesday with a murder investigation. And because you have higher ranking officers on the flex team, you've got three sergeants, a lieutenant, and a captain. Consequently, your operational costs and callouts have gone up as well for the flex team. Two of our three K-9 officers are sergeants, so that has increased our operational costs with the K-9 program. We've had two homicide investigations, two shootings, and numerous sexual assault investigations requiring overtime by our detectives and in some cases forced by uniform personnel. During the last shooting investigation, all three of our detectives were called out in the middle of the night and they each worked almost twenty-four hours straight, significant amount of overtime hours. I can tell you on this murder investigation that we had over in the Maple Hill area one day, the detectives were doing a search warrant. There were numerous suspects there and they needed to be questioned. They needed extensive support from the uniform personnel. We had to call in an entire shift to help with the murder investigation and again, that's a lot of overtime. Our detectives received call-out pay for being on standby, being called out in the middle of the night. And in the past, Detective Woodson was not paid as a detective, nor did he receive call but unpaid. The council just recently approved a third detective's position and once that was done, Detective Woodson was given the position that he's actually held for the past couple of years. We had to bump up his pay commensurate with that pay scale and we also gave him call-out pay, which he was not receiving, but the other detectives were. We recently held a hiring event on Saturday and we need a lot of people to assist us. We had a physical test and a written test. We only had five officers on the street that we couldn't cover with just officers on the streets, so we had to have a lot of officers come in and help us with this hiring event. This is the first time ever the Barstown Police has done this. We had to have officers come in on overtime to assist us with that. We've done extensive training across the board. We've had a lot of accidents, so for the first time ever this summer, we got the whole department trained in driver's training. It's never been done in the Barstown Police Department and we got that done, but we had to bring some of those officers in on overtime to create that, make that training happen. We also had to recertify the whole department on CPR with Risk Manager Greg Ashworth. We had to pay those officers on overtime to come in and attend those CPR classes. We've sent our patrol officers to courses that give them the skills to help them go home alive the end of the shifts. We sent our detectives to interview and interrogation courses, social media investigations courses, informant management courses. We've sent our public information officer to a public information officer course and several other courses to help her do that job. We've sent officers to Kentucky League of Cities driver's training. Our flex officers have gotten additional training. We've sought additional outside training for our K-9 program to raise the professionalism of the K-9 program. Higher levels of training increase our professionalism and they increase morale and they help with officer retention and they reduce our liabilities and lawsuits. Officers that are more highly trained are more confident in their skills and because they're more competent, they're less likely to make a hasty decision, which might result in a financial risk to the city, to the lawsuit. We're encouraging officers to be more proactive, get out and do your job, make traffic stops, make arrests. As a result, when they do this, they have to go to court more often and we're actually, first time we're monitoring officers to see what, who's doing what. We thank the citizens of Barstown, pay the police to get out here and be active and we're monitoring that for the first time, but as I said, they have to go to court more and when they have to go to court more, there's more overtime costs associated with court. And again, some of our active officers are now sergeants. We've worked two highway safety grants and if we don't use these grants, the state's not likely to give them to us again. We've only been reimbursed for one of these grants. Our detective on the Greater Hardin County Narcotics Task Force, Eric Williamson, we pay for his overtime and on a quarterly basis, the drug task force reimburses us for that overtime. We have not been reimbursed for that overtime from the task force yet. The department has been well under strength well before July first. We are currently down three officers and keeping, we try to keep three officers at a minimum on all the streets and sometimes that's challenging and sometimes we have to pay overtime to maintain safe levels of staffing on the street. We had several events this year which requires to put extra officers on the street. Just recently, we had the Buttermilk and the Bourbon Festival. The downtown area is very crowded. I mean, I'm sure you've all been out, there was a lot of people here. We need to make sure we have enough officers on the street to maintain a safe atmosphere for festival attendees. We had to pay overtime for that. And lastly, and this is probably a minimum thing, but it is a factor as well, the police incentive pay was thirty-one hundred dollars and it was just raised to four thousand dollars for the first time in approximately fourteen years. That affects the unscheduled overtime rates for police officers and that has, across the board, affected our overtime. It's insignificant, but all these factors together have led to an increase in overtime costs for the police department.
Will you, I want to touch back to where you said with the flex team, flex pay was set up to pay overtime and give, uh, 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 comp time. Now, and which, that, that shouldn't change the thing very much. The only difference is you're not giving the flex time, right?
You can't do the comp time.
Or comp time, what?
Comp time's illegal.
Well, I, I, my point is-
That's what the man doing, that was paying where Rick was doing comp time.
I thought he said he was paying, he was paying overtime.
I'll answer that counsel. When I set up, we used to be comprised of the Sheriff's Department and I had to pick my training days, not only to accommodate the Barstown Police, but the Sheriff's Department as well. So I picked these out the previous year, a year in advance and I tried to select training days to alleviate some of the overtime costs for the police department. And at that time, when I went to former Chief Rick McCubbin, he told me that he would pay eight hours of overtime for the officers and then he would give them eight hours of comp time regardless of what we worked. I can't, in some cases, we were only working, we were only training eight hours a day. I can't, now that I'm responsible, that I can't justify that. I don't know if that's legal or not, but it, I can't articulate it and I can't justify it. So being that I'm responsible for it, I felt what was the proper thing, the appropriate thing to do in the best interest of the city was just to pay overtime, straight overtime for the amount of hours that we actually trained. In some cases, that may be seven and a half, it may be eight, maybe eight and a half, but I can defend that system. The previous system, it wasn't my responsibility, but now that, once it became that, I can't, I could not defend the way that that system compensation is set up. I don't know that it's proper.
Well, I'm not indicating that it was proper or otherwise, but I, if, if he was paying overtime and then giving comp time, and now you're paying overtime, it looks to me like you've got, I mean, the only thing you've knocked out is the comp time.
Sure, but the problem is, is when those officers take comp time and a lot of times we have to pay overtime to maintain coverage on the street. So if an officer takes his eight-hour day and that's going to leave us down, we're going to maybe have to pay another officer overtime to work. Does that help answer your question?
Sorry, you're too far.
But I'm done.
Anyway, we have had this discussion in the past and I think, Bob, Larry, you might know, this overtime, this overtime has created a big expense and we put some stipulation in that overtime. I mean, a couple of questions. On the events, when you have those events, are they paid by the organization? Are they paid by the city? You know, when you call, just like this Bourbon Festival or whatever, does Bourbon Festival pay city for security?
No, sir. The Bourbon Festival pays for their security here in the Indian area, but I'm sure if you made it out into town during the Bourbon Festival, you realize there's a lot of people downtown. The bars, you know, have bands, it's very crowded downtown. So while they have officers working security down here that they pay for, we need to bring in additional officers because there's a lot of people in this town, especially in the downtown area, and we need to keep the events safe. It requires extra manpower and we've had to bring out officers on overtime for not only the Bourbon Festival, but the Buttermilk. They are usually within thirty days of each other, so that's an expense over by the department.
I understand your duty, but we have a line item, I think you said, what, a hundred some thousand?
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. A line item budget. And I have no problem. You know, this shit has been put before, before the budget because the percent that you already done use overtime, you're talking about paying overtime, you're going to go over the budget and you never know what that may be. I wish we had had all this information because budget time and we could probably, because the budget's very tight and you're already at, what, forty-seven, forty-seven, fifty percent? And we got months ago before fiscal year was going in and you're going to run way over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And one other question, just like if you called out any county, I think I asked this question before, if you called any county, else you may be called New Haven and you may have thirty hours overtime in New Haven and a thirty hours overtime out of the city, so that has to be paid for by the taxpayers of Barstown, right?
We haven't had such in a while.
I know you haven't had such, I know, but possibility, it could happen.
It could happen. I mean, we are the largest police organization in, in the county, we're the county seat and anywhere you go in the state, smaller agencies lean on bigger agencies. We lean on the state police, we lean on the metro. And I, I think we would have a duty and obligation that if New Haven or Bloomfield had an incident and they reached out to us for mutual aid, then we would, we would have to respond. Now, how that would be worked out financially, behind the scenes, I don't have that answer for you, councilman, but I feel like it'd be our duty to help them.
Sure, I'm saying, I mean, I'm not debating it wasn't your duty, but I was just questioning who was paying for that expense, you know? I understand you're doing a good job, but I just want to know who was paying for it. Was the taxpayer of Barstown paying for all that overtime? Was New Haven or the county, whatever, was compromising, maybe reimbursing, sending it back to someone and I didn't know if anybody, if anyone reimbursed the city back or something like that, but you know?
Not that I know of, but I, I might not have known if they had.
Right.
Well, that's the thing, we don't have a mutual aid agreement with county. County refused to do it. By far as I'm concerned, we don't go to county.
Oh, you don't have a mutual aid with county?
No, they refuse to do so. Sheriff disengaged from the SRT team and would not do a mutual aid. He wants to call state police, so they'd call state police.
Hmm, I didn't know all that.
I don't want the liability of our team going out to county. I know we want to support them, but I feel-
I wouldn't realize that we would, we didn't have mutual aids.
No, we have no agreement.
That could be serious because time with the S and the calling somebody else when you have the sheriff before I'm right here in town, I didn't realize that.
Sheriff won't give us a mutual aid, he won't negotiate nothing else. He said he'll call state police if he needs help and he did.
Is this, is this on the agenda? I want to make sure.
Of course. SRT training? Yes. So, anyway. Let's get back to the overtime before we get to SRT training.
All our pay, standby pay is not overtime. The ten hours that they get on the schedules, it's not overtime. It's straight pay. If they get called out, it's overtime.
I, I didn't know how that was listed on the time sheet, I'm sorry.
That's okay. As far as the flex team goes, the hours that I calculated, a hundred and ninety-seven is forty-two hundred dollars and the K-9 was a hundred and eighty-eight hours at thirty-eight hundred. So I honestly don't think it's the flex team that's hurting, I think it's more of the shift coverage that's hurting you.
If you've got a combined flex team and K-9 callouts, you're not, you're not at eight thousand dollars. And that's a, that's a small, small percentage of what we're looking at.
And the raise in the incentive on overtime, I just calculated, it's a little over six thousand dollars.
I'm sorry?
It's a little over six thousand for the total incentive on overtime.
As I've said, we're, we're down officers and we have been well before July first. That becomes problematic with trying to maintain coverage. We just had an officer leave this week to take a, a job for twelve thousand dollars more a year, according to his statement, like with the Bullock County Sheriff. So with being down officers, sometimes it becomes problematic and, and trying to keep three officers on the street. We try to keep three officers, so that is the minimum safe level and we do, I think, pay a lot of overtime on that. We've looked at, there's been some discussion about returning to the ten-hour schedules. I've looked, we're looking at that system. It is going to, if we were to implement the ten-hour schedule, it is going to create some problems as far as maintaining supervision. Right now, with the twelve-hour shifts, we basically have four patunes and each platoon has a sergeant. So when that platoon is on, they have a sergeant supervising them. We go to a ten-hour shift, we're going to have rotating days off. The days off are going to switch every week for each person on that shift so that they're not all off on the same day. So we do that, when the sergeant rotates into his off days, say a four-day weekend, there's going to be four days, but that shift is without supervision and we would have to pay OIC pay. So it creates some problems. I don't know that it, I'm not going to say that it would solve the problem, but it also creates a problem with our supervision. And because of the way the officers rotate on the shifts, you have to have significantly higher number of officers. And at the schedules that we've looked at, right now, for instance, our first shift, both patunes on our first shift have five officers. So there's five officers on the street right now. With this ten-hour shift, because the, the days off are rotating for the officers, you have some that are off and you have to have a higher number of shifts, so, or, I'm sorry, you have to have a higher number of officers per shift. So you might have six officers on first shift, but because of the way the days rotate, two or three of them may be off. The schedule that I've looked at, or the schedules, actually lower the manpower that we have on the street day-to-day, so we're going to have some supervisory issues that we have to overcome. We're going to have some, it's going to lessen our manpower over all on the streets because of the rotating days off. And I don't know that it's going to solve a coverage problem. We still have coverage issues because if, the schedules that I've looked at, in some instances, there would be three officers on the street, so if one of those officers called in sick, we would have to pay overtime, again, for coverage to maintain three officers. It's just, it's difficult with a manpower shortage. We're doing the best we can.
Okay. Are we getting more people on the street than the twelve-hour or if we went back to ten? Now, we were told the twelve-hour shift was going to eliminate overtime. That's what Rick said.
That's one of the things he said. One of the other things he said was that it was going to put day-to-day more officers on the street and if we were adequate manpower, each platoon would have five officers on the street, which is more than you're going to have with a ten-hour schedule. So it does accomplish that. But to my knowledge, I'm sure Tracy can comment.
But are we paying five officers with overtime every shift?
No, we are not.
Okay, so we're back to what, four maybe?
We try to keep three. I mean, there's, and there's some days that we only have three. Today, for instance, we had three officers on the street.
Okay.
So, no, we didn't pay anybody to come in overtime because in some, those days-
But we have patrol officers.
We have three patrol officers on the street.
Not counting you or?
It's not counting, uh, Brad or, or detectives, but actually out in uniform in a marked car answering calls.
Tracy, did the twelve hours save money or did it?
No, I mean, it usually goes over budget, but usually I don't get to go after them until early March, April.
So the twelve hours did not save us money?
Yeah, nobody.
But it does.
But we got more manpower.
That was one, one of the items that are used to sell the twelve-hour shifts. The other one was that it does put more officers on the street per shift and that is true over the ten-hour schedule.
This is going to, this need to go to finance committee because you're going to go over budget and the budget's already tight.
We may not go over budget, we just have to-
Well, if you're not going to go over budget, what reason why? We want to-
Well, we want to find some solutions to, to cut back this overtime and hopefully slow up the training costs, overtime costs and so forth. That's what we need, to find a solution to, to get us back on track, but that way we don't have to bake a budget in that.
Here's, some of the things that we've done already is we've started adjusting people's schedules more. I put a lot more on the shoulders of the sergeants. I've ordered them to adjust their own schedules as far as flex training so that they're not claiming overtime. They're sergeants, so they're, again, their overtime rate is higher than the regular officers and I've ordered them to switch their days. We canceled almost all of our additional training that we had scheduled for this year. We had some training scheduled to help manage officers, help create a performance evaluation system, help run the FTO field training unit. We've canceled that additional training. We had some training scheduled this month for ASB baton and handcuff training. This is important training that probably should be done every year, but has not been done in the past. But the only way to get that training accomplished is by use of overtime, so we've canceled that training. We're trying, Lieutenant Gillick and I are trying to figure out how we're going to get the officers qualified on their rifles and pistols while limiting overtime because that's just a problem when you have a twenty-four-seven organization. It usually involves doing departmental-wide training, usually involves paying overtime. So we're working on how we can get officers qualified, we're mandated to qualify with our rifles and pistols with, while limiting the overtime.
We did most of our qualifications on shifts and rotated out from the street back to the range.
The problem with that is we work twelve-hour shifts and so our officers are coming in at seven o'clock. If we're doing daylight qualifications, it's, it's almost dark at seven and will be soon as we switch to, so when you do a biennial qualification, I mean, there's-
The, if I might, the, we, we have identified the problem and that is that, that we're using overtime at twice the rate that's budgeted. And there, there are two possibilities. One is that, that the committee could recommend to the council to increase the budget and the other is that we, you could make these changes that I think you're suggesting to, to try to get that, that number back down so that we don't go over it by the end of the year. We've got, we've got time to do it, which is why it's good that it's being identified.
We've implemented these changes.
Right, so-
And I think they're going to, I think they will significantly slow down some of the overtime costs. Okay, Tracy says no. I'm a little bit more optimistic, but I think we're going to put a slowdown on, on some of this, this overtime cost.
And it's, the overtime could be monitored, payroll, period of payroll, every payroll period will know.
We're trying to, to tag, if you will, the overtime hours to identify the different areas that it's going to, whether it's for investigations or, or court and, so we're working with Tracy, writing that on our, our time sheets and trying to identify that. Hopefully, we can identify some of these areas, whether it's for coverage.
So are you, do you, are you confident that we can reduce the overtime with the changes that, that you're suggesting to where we can at least get, stop the, the slide of the overtime going?
Yes, I am.
And get it back in at least at the rate of what would be in budget for the rest of the year?
I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I don't think we're going to go over budget. Again, as I pointed out, we were over budget forty-two percent last year and the budget was only raised an additional fifteen thousand dollars. If we did the exact same thing we did last year, we would go over budget and we've got all these others of factors affecting the overtime this year that we haven't had in the past. I mean, if we have any more shootings or, or murders, I have no control over that. I do think that some of the changes that we're implementing are going to help us as far as training hours and trying to adjust officer schedules. I think we are going to make a dent in the drain, but are we going to stay within the budget this year? There's some factors that are going to be out of my control.
Another suggestion is spend less in other line items to make up for that virgin overtime.
Yes, we could do that because, given my opinion, and I'm not ready to, I understand where you come from, I understand all the facts that you indicated, but I am not ready to increase the budget. My opinion, we have fifty-three percent left in that line item and we've got time, just like Larry indicated, we've got time. We could revisit this maybe January or February and maybe we can just see how far you, I mean, how many, what percent are you up to on that line? mean, how many, what percent are you up to on that lineup? So, I think we have time, I don't think, I don't think. I'm not ready to make a recommendation to increase the budget. I'm ready to kinda wait it out and improve my knowledge a little bit more on this. That's my opinion.
What's your opinion?
Well, I think you identified a problem and I think all indications are, is you're working on bringing it in line the best you can.
Yes, sir.
And let's see what happens. I mean, I like, and I, and you're, you all are the ones that know the training you need and what have you. I don't need to be sitting there thinking even handcuffs or otherwise. But, you all know the range and you all know the training you absolutely have to have. Now, I've been to a lot of training that you went sleep on, you know, just because we got that grade, but you know the training you need. Keep doing what you think you really need and you've gotta do and let's see where we're at with it. But with that knowing that, I think you already know you're gonna have to find some money or a cutback on something. And work with Tracy and see how it goes, even though she doesn't like. It's gonna fall on you to be conservative and any training that we can do on shift, we do on shift. K-9 can train on time, on shift training. I trained for years that way. SRT, if you get called out, I know you've gotta be accredited and there's a certain amount of hours that you have to have each month in training. That could be counted as your training instead of creating overtime for an additional training that month. You know, if you get called out, that's training. So, you could, but we've gotta ride this storm up at least until, until we get this, where we can live with it and maybe not have to make a budget amendment and then next year we'll make this right, but, you know.
I agree with you. I mean, some of your shoulders, we have over two billion dollars on budget in the, oh, is it four, is it two billion something?
Two point, two point four, I think.
Two point four million dollar budget and your responsibility to analyze and evaluate each line item and just like Tracy said, you may have to make some cuts somewhere.
Yes, sir.
And I'm quite sure you can find some cuts. I mean, some very important you cannot cut, some is priority, but some cuts, possibility. I have a two point four million dollar, you may be able to cut.
Well, I think it's the committee, the bottom line, we wanna do everything we can and I know you're doing everything you can. And that way, when we go, I'm like Francis, I'm not at that point, but if we have to go back to the council, I wanna be able to look them in the face and say.
Sure.
We have done everything and these guys have cut this and cut here and, you know. Now, this is where we're at, we've done all we can do to try to fix this problem, is what we gotta do. But I wanna be able to say that we, I honestly look them in the face and say, this is what we've done.
Right.
I wanna look back and say, well, you could've done this and could've done that when we could've.
I agree with you.
So, we're gonna have to make it up.
Yes, sir. You got any comments, Ray, before?
I just, first of all, I gotta hand it to Captain Mattingly and Lieutenant Gillick that, I mean, they've instilled into these guys, the morale is up, their training is superb to any big police department, but I would like to, I think Chief Mattingly and Lieutenant Gillick are gonna look at this and I think we'll let them ride with this and work in hand-in-hand with Tracy. And I agree, I'm not, I'm not ready to go to the council and ask, but I think if we monitor them and work with, have Brad and McKenzie work with me and Tracy, we'll get it back on track. But there's a lot of factors that you have to, that you have to take in once. The comp time is illegal to have been given to begin with, even though it's a small portion. There's, you take a lot of small portions of food, you wind up with a big plate full and that's what's happened here. And I know these two guys are big on training and this department is changing its mode to become more professional. So, but I'm not ready to go ask the council for more money at this time either, so I think you work with us to get back on track and do what we gotta do.
We'll do this again, our next meeting will be December eighth and I think that'd give Chief time to get some ideas and everybody have more input and Tracy will keep us abreast of where it's going and we can see where it's gonna go. That'd give them six, eight weeks on payroll and see where overtime's gonna go.
Have time to review that two point four million dollar budget, maybe some line items that.
We look at, I'm gonna look at the overall budget, come up with something to get over Chief and give him some comments back to us, see where we can maybe help him with this and not be too brutal on him.
There's one more consideration and that is that for any, if we have any officers that are close to retirement, we have the spiking issue where if they, if they are allowed to accumulate too much overtime and they get over a ten percent difference from last year, from any one year to another year in their last five, then we will be, will be paying dearly for that to the retirement system.
The only officer that I can think of hand correctly, my own lieutenant, that'd be close to retirement is Tim Simpson and I would not say that he's getting a significant amount of overtime. He occasionally does help out with shift coverage and he does receive OIC pay when Sergeant Medley, whose platoon he's in, is off, but I don't think that that.
Well, it's just something to keep in mind because.
Yes, sir.
That can be pretty good amounts.
I see a high rate of overtime in federal overtime, but that's covered, there's been an adjustment made, Tracy told me that they adjusted to a fifty-dollar an hour rate. That was a funding, so the overtime and benefits and all that, the officer was actually getting more, this cost the city more than what we were getting in federal funding. So, he sees adjusted that, so they'll get less hours of federal overtime, but the money will be adjusted properly. For that and that, in a way, it won't come out of his budget.
She's worked pretty diligently with Megan Wells, our administrative assistant who runs those grants for us and I wanna say they just kinda ran as they always were and Tracy identified that we weren't calculating, probably calculating a rate sufficient enough to ensure the city wasn't losing money. So, her and Megan have adjusted that and I don't feel like that's gonna be a problem anymore.
The total number of officers altogether, what, how many we got, twenty-two, twenty-four?
Twenty-four now. We had an, like I said, we had an officer leave this week for, in his words, a better paying job, so we're at twenty-five on Monday, now we're down to twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Swearing officers?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to SRT policy and training. Am I the one brought up? I think it was my.
Yes, sir.
One note, we were going out to county.
We have not. We have.
Are we assisting any of the county on any of their drug task forces or?
We assist the, our Harden County Narcotics Task Force.
East Lardar.
We have a detective assigned to that as well, that's just kind of a.
Last three months, not been out to county, so. Well, this is not being created, created county activities. And y'all still need a lot of activity, a lot of good activity.
Let me explain all that too, on this, Captain McKenzie, we got a memo, we sent a memo to Eddie because the city of Barstown, the city taxpayer was paying for the ammunition for the sheriff's department and we asked Eddie, the sheriff's department, to pay for the ammunition that they shoot and train with and he refused to, he refused to pay for his own ammunition and I did not feel that the city taxpayers should pay for his ammunition and so at that point, when he was asked to pay, he withdrew from this flex team.
He made a public statement that if he needed additional, he would call the state police, so that, they don't want our assistance and all the schools are in the city limits and that's why, well, the main reason we maintain SRT in my mind.
Yes.
Is for, we have a responsibility to those schools and the public to maintain a response team for active shooters.
Can I add to that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
You two are free, I was a hypothetical question. Time of the essence is very important and since we don't have a mutual agreement with the county and you have to call state police, time of the essence, that's my concern, time of the essence, you know.
We just, we just had that out in the county, it took, what, six hours, the state police, six hours to get there?
Five hours.
Five hours?
What's that now?
We just had an incident, we didn't, but the county had an incident out in, out in the county of the hostage situation.
Right.
And it took KSP five hours to get to that location out in the county for the sheriff's department. We weren't involved in that. You following me?
I understand what you're saying, so if you had a mutual agreement with the city of Barstown, Barstown could.
We could've been there thirty minutes.
The sheriff would, the sheriff would have done that.
You know, I mean, I'm buried.
But the sheriff won't, he refused.
I'm a hundred percent for mutual agreement and we do not have a mutual agreement.
But you gotta have two cooperating parties.
Sure, I understand, I understand all that.
And we've tried.
And I didn't realize that really till, till just about thirty minutes, twenty, few minutes ago, that we didn't have a mutual agreement.
Well, we've never had a mutual aid agreement between the flex teams. It was just, it was never a mutual aid agreement, it was just a, it was just a, two departments got, have gotten together to put this flex team together. There was no mutual aid agreement, there was no agreement whatsoever. I just asked him to pay for his ammunition and he refused.
But at that time, did you, what, did you two work together?
Yes, yeah, they worked together.
We were combined. When I started, he started.
Combined, that's Brian.
It was a mutual agreement between the city and county.
Verbal.
Verbal, but there was officers from both departments in that unit.
Right.
Well, he pulled all of his people out, so therefore it's only city officers in this unit. At that point, we need a mutual aid agreement, some type of agreement and we're gonna utilize nothing but our officers in a county situation.
Right.
And I want a mutual aid agreement of where the responsibility lies and.
And who's gonna pay for it.
And who's gonna pay for it. The county refused to pay, to contribute to the training and to the equipment.
We were supplying the equipment and the ammunition to shoot.
And enough's enough. And you gotta pay, the county had to pay their share and they said they could use the state cheaper, so be it.
Anyway, I have.
Yeah, I know. I would've liked Kevin to get, because there were good guys on county and I liked, but we're not gonna pay.
And I know Ed, we're good.
Yep, that's really good, as long as we maintain our response team.
And I would have a discussion with Ed, I know Ed.
As long as we maintain our response team for the school systems here and for the city of Barstown, then that satisfies me. Anything else on that? Recommendation to council, I think we've done, I'm not gonna make any recommendations. I'll give my, I'll give the report that there's been an increase in overtime and we're working on different avenues to reduce the overtime and it's ongoing and we'll give them another report on it December eighth after our meeting and hopefully it'll be a better report. I'm not gonna go into detail for them. But we'll let them know that there's been, brought to our attention, that we're gonna address it. I think y'all were bringing it up. Sure, we're doing that, that's just, the chief doing everything he can to curtail the overtime and expenses in the department and get a handle on this place.
Right.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. I ask for the chairman to be. Little move. Second, Mr. Francis. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You guys want this?
I already have it.
Oh, wait.
I already have it.
Okay.